Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to see you each and everyone. If you're here this evening, it's 6:00. We do have a warm present. And we have the honor of two of our cautions going to lead us into place this evening, which is a great honor.
To regions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you very much. And Kim is going to read our missions.
The board mission statement. Tulsa Midway Independent School District educates every student to be a lifelong learner, a person of integrity, and a positive contributor to society.
Chrissy. The next item on the agenda is public comment, which is the time for members of the audience to address the Board of Trustees before we begin. I remind our audience members of the board's procedure for handling public comments. Each public comment speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the board. Except, the non-English speaker will be allowed a maximum of six minutes to address the board. Please keep your comments and criticisms civil and courteous. Avoid using profanity. Refrain from making personal attacks on others during your opportunity to speak. Yelling inappropriate, uncivil, or discriminatory comments will not be permitted. Lastly, we ask that you not discuss students who are not your own child. I also caution you that your public comments should not complain about individual school employees by name or position or other than your own child identified students. As presiding officer, I'm obligated to determine whether a person is addressing the board as attempted to administratively resolve any complaints or grievances about which they want to address the board that involve district officers or employees. In the event your comments constitute a complaint or charge against any employer officer, it may be necessary for me to interrupt and ask you to stop and direct you to proceed with the school district's formal grievance proceedings or to have them heard in executive session depending on the matter of the complaint. Any concerns or complaints regarding individual district employees, students, or parents must be resolved via the district's grievance process, which can be found online and include policies DGBA and FNG and GF. And our first speaker this evening will be Ms. Sylvia Henderson.
Hi. Hi, good afternoon. I first want to congratulate the new members, new board members, and the ones who are not here. And the thank you also for the time they give to the community. I come over here to request a real change. I know we voted for change, and that's what I want, on the special education. I have... And I'm asking that on behalf of myself and on behalf of kids who don't have a disability disabilities. When you see a child with a disability disability, you're constantly reminded they need support. It's easy to forget about those who don't show their disability readily, but they are no less deserving of our support. Special education should include all those children with the following conditions. And I don't know if you all are aware, the special education doesn't only include the kids with handicap. It also includes kids like me with dyslexia, ADHD, dyscalculia, autism, speech impairment, emotional disturbance, spatial language impairment, visual impairment, including blindness, orthopedic impairment, intellectual disability, traumatic brain injury, and multiple disabilities. So the support that we give them usually is more to the people that we see because we see that they have their handicap. If we not give the support, the same support to the kids like me that they don't have a disability disability, it's like not having a ramp for somebody who uses a wheelchair, not helping or blaming the one who can't see. So for me, it's really important because I have seen it on my kids that the special education should be there to help the kids. And we should be... To the... I'm sorry. We should give them all the help that they need to succeed. And we will fulfill the mission of the TM, which is the mission of Tulsa Midway Independent School District, is to educate every student to be a lifelong learner, a person of integrity, and a positive contributor to society. When you're not helping the kids with an invisible disability, you're not fulfilling your goal, your mission goal. Why? Because the person who struggled, like me, either to dyslexia by reading or stuttering, he's not going to want to go further in their career, to go and go to the college because he struggled in school. So for me, it's really important that we really fulfill the mission of the TM statement and help our kids, all of them, especially not only the ones that are visible, but of the ones who are not seeing, like me. I have ADHD, dyslexia, auditory disorder, you name it. Probably I'm on the spectrum too. But I just wanted to say, we really want change. And thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Okay. All right, now, what we're going to be going through for the next few moments is board business, and it deals with the election. And the first part of it is consider an approval of the resolution canvassing the results and declaring the results of the TM Board of Trustees election. Resolution is canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general election held November the 8th, 2022, for the purpose of electing five members to the Board of Trustees of Tulsa Midway Independent School District... Excuse me. And Tulsa Midway Independent District, two, four, unexpired terms, five, six, and place seven. Whereas on August the 11th, the Board of Trustees of Tulsa Midway Independent School District ordered a general election to be held on November 8th for the purpose of electing trustees to place two, four, unexpired term, five, six, and place seven. Whereas the order of the Board of Trustees calling the election together with the notice therein is recorded in the board's minutes, and is hereby referenced to and made a part of thereof all purposes and whereas said election was ordered and agreed to be held jointly with the county of Oasis, Texas, who would appoint all election officials necessary to run the election and whereas said election was duly held at the time and place specified and whereas every general election in Texas must be canvassed in accordance with Section 67.001-67.002 of the Texas Education Code and whereas on this date came to be considered the results of said elections held as ordered and now therefore be resolved by the Tulsa Midway Independent School District on Friday, November the 18th, at 6:00 p.m. the Board of Trustees of Tulsa Midway Independent School District canvass results of November 8th, 2022 general election in accordance with Chapter 67 of the Texas Election Code. Said election was duly called. That notice was given in accordance with the law and in accordance with order calling the election, and the election was held in accordance with the law that due returns of said election had been made by proper officers supplied by Oasis County. End. Number one. Okay, this portion of it. In said election, the candidate Paul Ariaga received a majority of votes cast for place two by receiving 1,786 votes, while candidate Stephen Helscher received 1,408 votes. And pursuant to this official canvass, the said Paul Ariaga is declared elected Board of Trustees place two for the Tulsa Midway Independent School District. In said election, the candidate Janie Aguiarano received a majority of votes cast for place four as unexpired term by receiving 1,612 votes, while candidate Melinda Gomez-Ariaga received 1,365 votes. In pursuant to this official canvass, the said Janie Aguiarano is declared elected Board of Trustees place four for an unexpired term for Tulsa Midway Independent School District. In said election, the candidate Leo Gonzalez received a majority of votes cast for place five by receiving 1,352, while Jan votes... While candidate Jamis Teller received 1,083 votes and candidate Jason Wood received 634 votes. Pursuant to this official canvass, the said Leo Gonzalez is declared elected Board of Trustees place five Tulsa Midway Independent School District. In said election, the candidate Denise Villalobos received a majority of votes cast for place six by receiving 2,123 votes, while candidate John Samiego received 882 votes. And pursuant to the official canvass, the said Denise Villalobos is declared elected Board of Trustees place six for Tulsa Midway Independent School District. In said election, the candidate Kimberly Boone received a majority of votes cast for place seven by receiving 1,735 votes, while candidate Laura Gonzalez received 1,319 votes. In pursuant to this official canvass, the said Kimberly Boone is declared elected Board of Trustees place seven for Tulsa Midway Independent School District. The tabulation of votes cast in the general election held on November 8th, 2022 for the purpose of electing five members of the Board of Trustees of Tulsa Midway Independent School District is attached here to Exhibit A. Said tabulation is adopted as the official tabulation of the votes cast at the election and will be filed and recorded in the official records of Tulsa Midway Independent School District. The meeting at which this canvassing was conducted was open to the public, and public notice of time, place, and purposes of the meeting was given and posted as required by Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code as amended. This resolution is effective immediately from and after the date of its passage and is so enacted. Okay. Now, in essence, I'll move to adopt the resolution canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the Tulsa Midway Independent Board of Trustees election. That's motion. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Then we move on to consider approval of resolution canvassing the returns declaring the results of candidate and resolution canvassing the returns and declaring the results of a bond election and other matters in connection therewith. Whereas the Board of Trustees, the board of the Tulsa Midway Independent School District, the district ordered an election to be held on November the 8th, 2022 for the purpose of determining whether qualified voters of the district would authorize the district's insurance of a bond obligation bond. And whereas the bond has reviewed and investigated all matters pertaining to the election, including the ordering, noticing, election officers holding and returns thereof. And whereas the bond was diligently inquired into a poll list and the official election returns were... that were duly and lawfully made to the board by the judges and the clerks holding, conducting the election. And whereas from these returns, this board hereby finds that the following votes were cast in the election by qualified votes of the district. Proposition A, the issuance of $98,500,000 of bonds by the Tulsa Midway Independent School District for school facilities and living of a tax and payment thereof. This is a property tax increase. That's what had to be stated. Early voting for was 1,034, against was 1,372. Election day votes, 410 for, 612 against, for a total of 1,444 for, 1,984 against. And the total votes cast was 3,428. The number of counted provisional ballots, zero. The number of uncounted provisional ballots, zero. Now therefore, it is resolved by the Board of Trustees of Tulsa Midway Independent School District, that's Section 1. The board officially finds, determines, and declares that the election was properly ordered, that proper legal notice of the election was given, that the proper election officers were appointed prior to the election, that the election was legally held, that all qualified voters of the district were permitted to vote at the election, that returns of the results of the election had been made and delivered, and that the board has canvassed its returns all in accordance with the laws of the state of Texas, the United States of America, and the order calling for the election. Section 2. A majority of the qualified voters of the district voting in the election, having voted against Proposition A, the board hereby finds and determines that this proposition failed an election. Section 9. Recitals contained in the preamble thereof here of rather are hereby found to be true. And such recitals are hereby made a part of that resolution for all purposes and are adopted as a part of the judgment and finding of the board. Section 4. All orders and resolutions of parts thereof which are in conflict inconsistent with any provisions of this resolution are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. And the provisions of the resolution shall be and remain controlling as the matter resolved herein. Section 5. The resolution shall be construed and enforced in accordance with the laws of the state of Texas, the United States of America. Section 6. If any provision of the resolution or the application thereof to any person or circumstance shall be held to be invalid, the remainder of this resolution and the applications of such provisions to other persons and circumstances shall nevertheless be valid. And the board hereby declares that the resolution would have been enacted without such invalid provisions. Section 7. It is official, officially found, determined, and declared that the meeting at which the resolution is adopted was open to the public and public of notice of time, place, subject matter, and the public business to be considered at such meetings. Including, resolution was given all the required Chapter 551 as admitted Texas Government Code. Section 8. This resolution shall be enforced in effect from after its final passage and is so resolved. So I move to adopt the resolution canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the bond election. I made the motion in seconds. All those in favor? No opposition to it. Thank you very much. And to continue issuing certificates of declared elections. There's a process. We'll sign those papers up. And I will read the ones that come in here. It says, "A certificate of declared election in the name and hereby authorized of the Board of Trustees Tulsa Midway Independent School District." This is to certify that opposed candidate for place two Tulsa Midway Independent School District, Board of Trustees Paul Ariaga, at a duly called board meeting and pursuant to the order issued on August the 11th, 2022, is hereby declared to be elected to place two for the purpose of the November 8th, 2022 election. In testimony whereof, I have here underd signed my name and caused the seal of Tulsa Midway Independent School District of Corpus Christi Texas to be affixed on this 18th day of November, 2022. Certificate of declared election in the name and by the authority of the Board of Trustees Tulsa Midway Independent School District is to certify that opposed candidate place four, unexpired term Tulsa Midway Independent School District, Board of Trustees Janie Aguiarano, at a duly called board meeting and pursuant to order issued on August the 11th, 2022, is hereby declared to be elected to place four, unexpired term, for the purpose of the November 8th, 2022 election. In testimony hereof, I hereby do under sign in my name and cause the seal of Tulsa Midway Independent School District of Corpus Christi to be affixed on this 18th day of November, 2022. Certificate of declared election in the name and by the authority of the Board of Trustees Tulsa Midway Independent School District is to certify that opposed candidate place five Tulsa Midway Independent School District, Board of Trustees Leo Gonzalez, at a duly called board meeting and pursuant to order issued on August the 11th, 2022, is hereby declared to be elected to place five for the purpose of the November 8th, 2022 election. Is testimony hereof and where I do under sign my name and cause the seal of Tulsa Midway Independent School District of Corpus Christi Texas to be affixed on this 18th day of November, 2022. Certificate of declared election in the name and by the authority of the Board of Trustees Tulsa Midway Independent School District is to certify that opposed candidate for place six Tulsa Midway Independent School District, Board of Trustees Denise Villalobos, at a duly called board meeting and pursuant to the order issued on August the 11th, 2022, is hereby declared to be elected place six for the purpose of the November 8th, 2022 election. In testimony hereof, whereof I under sign my name and cause the seal of Tulsa Midway Independent School District of Corpus Christi Texas to be affixed on this 18th day of November, 2022. Certificate of declared election in the name and by the author... authority of the Board of Trustees Tulsa Midway Independent School District is to certify that opposed candidate for place seven Tulsa Midway Independent School District, Board of Trustees Kimberly Boone, at a duly called board meeting and pursuant to the order issued on August the 11th, 2022, is hereby declared to be elected to place seven for the purpose of the November 8th, 2022 election. In testimony whereof, I have under sign in my name and cause the seal of Tulsa Midway Independent School District of Corpus Christi Texas to be affixed on this 18th day of November, 2022. Okay, now that...
Ms. Gonzalez and Mr. Abia, I need you to sign your statement. Please, officer. Sign these real quick. And then she'll come in after. Paul, stand that way. I want your sign in. For staff.
Okay.
Got it? Wrong one. Okay. I have another one. These two right there. Do you want to have them sign now? The white one for now?
Yeah.
Janie, can you have these two? And you can stand where you were so that she can... She is for all of you in the seat.
You can stand in the...
Like in a U shape.
It was placed two.
Okay, so in case two. Four?
Need to drink a water.
Five, six. All right.
Good evening. And then you've allowed me to bestow this honor. You're not excited for your family members?
Yes.
All right. Okay, here we go. Please raise your right hands. I'm going to go... when I ask for your name, please state your name. And then I'm going to repeat your ISD. And then I want you to repeat your place number. Okay? Here we go. I state your name. To solemnly swear or affirm.
Is it all together or...
All together. Does that start over again?
Yeah.
Okay, here we go. I state your name.
Denise Villalobos.
To solemnly swear or affirm.
To solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the office of...
That I will faithfully execute the office of...
Tulsa Midway ISD Board of Trustees, place...
Tulsa Midway ISD Board of Trustees, place six.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve...
Preserve.
Protect...
Protect.
And defend...
And defend.
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And of the state...
And of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You're sworn in. Congratulations. I'm going to have them sign theirs.
No, if you can't, please come back here so she can have you sign your...
Yes. I'm going to start with Paul.
Chrissy.
I'm going to go ahead and sign it here. Thank you, sir. Janie? I'm going to sign it here. Okay. Congratulations.
Yeah. I think they'll turn it back. He won't know.
Congratulations, sir. I'm going to sign it right here.
Leo.
You mind if I write one?
Thanks, Christine. Yes, please, sir. I was telling you. With Jake, we have our signature.
Can I get a picture with Judge Rubio, please? She wanted to get everybody...
I can do the whole board if you want me to.
Sure. Let's get everybody together. Please.
And as you all know, that one of a lifelong friend, board member, Mr. Felix Landine, passed away this year, and Jamie is filling the rest of his term. So, it's something, we honored him last week, named him the NJROTC Rifle Ranger in his honor, and a plaque and a picture for all of his years of service. It was a great deal to work with him as well, so, okay.
A letter to read.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, excuse me, sorry.
At this time, I would like to read a statement from Jan Mestella. She writes, "I have asked my high school classmate, Janie Anguiano, to read this for me. Dear TM Board of Trustees, I would like to congratulate the new TM ISD Board of, Board Members Leo Gonzalez, Denise Villalobos, Paul Ariaga. I also congratulate Kim Boone and Janie Anguiano for your reelection. I appreciate the time you will invest in the students, teachers, and staff of Telosa Midway Independent School District, and I am confident you will serve our district with ethics, integrity, and morals. With the experienced leadership of our superintendent, Stephen Van Metry, I pray this new board will work together to become a team of eight, focusing on students, teachers, and staff with every decision. I challenge you to support him and respect his years of knowledge and experience. I have been asked many times over the last seventeen years, what is your why? My answer has always been quite simple: do what is best for our students, teachers, and staff. I have always enjoyed giving back to the district that provided me with a solid education and so many great memories. I am a TM alumnus. Paul and I were high school sweethearts. We love this district so much that we raised two Telosa Midway graduates who are productive contributors to their communities. We are also proud to have two grandsons that have attended TM ISD since kindergarten. We are blessed to have three generations of warriors and Cherokees. During my forty-five-year nursing career, I was honored to serve nine years as a TM school nurse. The kids nicknamed me "Nersey," which makes me smile to this day. I became a nurse to care for others, but serving the students of TM ISD was a highlight of my professional career. In closing, I would like to say thank you to all of those who allowed me to serve this outstanding school district for so many years. It was my honor, and the next time you pray, please thank God for our precious kids. Jan Mestella." And I would like to just publicly thank Jan for all her years of service to this community as a board member and as an employee of Telosa Midway. There are a few people who have really, I can say, that I know that have, that are of high character and high integrity, and Jan Mestella is that person. She, she served her community well. I wish her well, and I hope she continues to be a part of our community because she has a lot to offer still. Thank you.
Did, I did not hear anything from John or Stephen, so, okay. Thank you, Jamie. Okay, we move into the discussion-action items, and this is still dealing with the board. This is something that normally happens right after an election, as you rely on the board. And we're gonna be discussing, considering reorganization of board officers. And the board officers are the president, vice president, secretary, and vice secretary. All are key, you know, because you have a vice president, vice secretary, if one of the others not there. And then the rare occasion, which it has happened, when several of them weren't here at one time, it was kinda hard, but we dealt with it and everything over the year. So, at this time, the president is normally the first one that's nominated. Do we have any nominations for president of the board?
I'd like to nominate Paul Ariaga.
I would like to, oh, do we need a second?
No, 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 no.
I'd like to nominate Kimberly Boone.
Okay. Are there any others? When you made a mistake and said, is there a second? That kinda confused everybody. In other words, is there a second person? I did that, everyone. You don't have to second it. Okay, are there any others? If there are no others, so we'll go in the order. All those in favor of Paul Ariaga?
Yes, you get to it.
That's another thing people don't understand. Yes, you can vote for yourself.
Okay.
For Ms. Kim Boone. Ms. Boone, you're the new president? Now, that's, I can continue the rest of it, or you want Kim to take over?
No, continue.
Okay. The next one is for vice president. Okay, do we have any nominees for vice president, please?
I nominate Paul Mestella.
I nominate Paul Ariaga.
Are there any others?
I would nominate Leo Gonzalez. Leo?
Leo? Any others? Okay, we'll go in that order. Paul Mestella. Paul Ariaga. Leo.
Oh.
You didn't even vote, you didn't even vote for yourself.
Oh, I didn't vote. Sorry. Okay, I'll vote for myself.
No, you don't. Okay, so that, that means that Paul Ariaga is vice president. Okay. Secretary, I will nominate, I would nominate Janie Anguiano. Is there another?
I nominate Leo Gonzalez.
Are there any others? If there aren't any others, Janie Anguiano. Leo Gonzalez. Okay, so Janie will take that one. Okay, now for vice secretary, do we have any nominees for vice secretary? I will nominate Denise Villalobos.
I nominate Leo Gonzalez.
Are there any others? Okay. In order, Denise.
You didn't vote for yourself?
No, I didn't.
Leo Gonzalez. Okay. Okay, the way the officers will be, we will swap around next week. There's no sense in playing musical chairs tonight. So that means that Leo will be sitting next to, well, no, it'll be, Janie will be the secretary, Leo will stay in the seat he's in now. And then for vice president, it'll be Paul here, Paul Ariaga. And for president, Kim should move over here. So, is everybody good with that? Okay, congratulations, everyone. Okay, now, it has been suggested, since we have some students here, a teacher, and they should be headed for their Thanksgiving break, and it was at the pleasure of the board, well, I'm not supposed to do that anymore.
Madam President, if I may, aside from the discussion-action items dealing with the choir, our deputy superintendent, Mr. Carroll, will be leaving in very shortly to take care of a much-planned trip. He, when he planned the trip, he wasn't anticipating a Friday board meeting. So, I would also request, prior to going into executive session, that we also move up our consent items, in case there's any questions that he may stick around to answer, okay?
Everybody good with that?
Okay. Okay, we need to discuss and consider out-of-state field trip requests for TMHS Choir. They'll be going to Carnegie Hall in New York City, February first through the fifth, two thousand twenty-three, and this is pursuant to board policy FNG Local.
Madam President, members of the board, we have our outstanding choir director at Telosa Midway High School, Ms. Reagan, and she's accompanied by two outstanding scholar choral students, and I'm gonna turn this over to you, and congratulations.
Thank you. I'll let you all just stop. Okay, so these two girls right here, Hazel and Isabel, last year, they went through a series of competitions, making it to the state level. At the state level, students that made the state level are then eligible to be nominated for a national choir. They were nominated, through the nomination, there's another audition, and from there, they select who will make this national choir. The national choir, there are, there's the top choir, which is mixed soprano, alto, tenor, bass, and then there is a choir right below that, that is the treble choir, because we typically have more females in choir than males, so they have an additional option for the sopranos and altos. They both auditioned, so they advanced past the state level to this national choir. They both auditioned and earned a place in the top choir, the mixed choir, and because of that, they are now given this amazing once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to sing at Carnegie Hall in New York City. And so, we are requesting approval for the trip as well as funding. Do you have any questions about it?
I think it's a wonderful opportunity for our girls. I mean, that's, that's, that's an accomplishment.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, I would so.
Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Madam President, it is the administration's recommendation, I'm on the wrong page, it's the administration's recommendation that the board approve the out-of-state field trip for Telosa Midway High School Choir trip to Carnegie Hall, New York City, on February first through fifth, two thousand twenty-three, pursuant to board policy FNG Local as presented.
I'll make the motion.
You're gonna make the motion? You have a second?
One second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
So, Madam President, members of the board, please go to the consent agenda informational items. It is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
One second. Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Now, we'll go into executive.
Okay. The board will convene in closed meeting, as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, to discuss items allowed by the Texas Government Code, Chapter five-five-one dot zero seven-one dash dot zero-seven-six dot zero-eight-two dot zero-eight-two-one dot zero-eight-three dot zero-eight-four. We are now going into closed session. And the time is six forty-six.
Twenty-one contract for the remainder of the twenty-two-twenty-three school year to Mr. Jonathan Galván Muniz.
I'll make that motion, please. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees issue a retire-rehire probationary contract for the remainder of the twenty-two-twenty-three school year to Ms. Maria Castro.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees issue a retire-rehire probationary contract for the remainder of the twenty-two-twenty-three school year to Ms. Maria Castro.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees accept the resignations of Ms. Sherry Davis and Ms. Leticia Reyes, effective at the end of this semester.
That's correct.
At the end of the fall, two thousand twenty-two semester.
Do we have a motion? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Now, we'll go to item three on discussion-action. Pest update.
Okay.
The pest update.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, Madam President, members of the board, as you know, we have a pest issue, particularly at our middle school, and I've asked Mr. Patrick Hernandez, Mr. Hernandez is Assistant Superintendent for District Operations. He oversees transportation, food service, maintenance, custodial, and security.
Members of the board, good evening, and congratulations, and welcome, the new members of the board. For the, you received a report in your packet, just a brief summary, for pest services here at Telosa Midway, we have Robert Brody, who could not be here with us this evening. He's our designated IPM coordinator for the district. In addition to district contracts with Pest Patrol to assist us with the pest control services for the district in areas that Robert is not certified to do, because we have to have licenses, and if we don't have all the proper licenses, Robert doesn't have all of them, we use Pest Patrol to fill in. We're contracted with Pest Patrol, they do a monthly service on all the rodent stations. If you look all around our buildings, there's little bait stations, and those are baited to treat rats and mice. And Pest Patrol also services the cafeterias, they'll come in and spray for roaches and ants, and professional services. In the report, you'll see that at the middle school, we've had some fluctuations in rodents. About two years ago, we had a really bad problem in the kitchen area, and we were able to attack it. It kinda went down for most of the period of about a year, year and a half, and in this August, it started rising again, we started seeing cases. We noticed that they moved from the... Motion carries seven zero.
Madam President, members of the Board, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees issue a retire-rehire probationary contract for the remainder of the 22-23 school year to Ms. Maria Castro.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Madam President, members of the Board, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees accept the resignations of Ms. Sherry Davis and Ms. Letitia Reyes, effective at the end of this semester...
That's correct.
At the end of the fall 2022 semester.
Do we have a motion? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Now we'll go to item three on discussion-action. Pest update.
Okay.
The pest update.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, Madam President, members of the Board, as you know, we have a pest issue, particularly at our middle school, and I've asked Mr. Patrick Hernandez, Mr. Hernandez is Assistant Superintendent for District Operations. He oversees transportation, food service, maintenance, custodial, and security.
Members of the Board, good evening, and congratulations, and welcome, the new members of the Board. For the... You received a report in your packet, just a brief summary. For pest services here at Tulsa Midway, we have Robert Brody, who could not be here with us this evening. He's our designated IPM Coordinator for the district. In addition to district contracts with Pest Patrol to assist us with the pest control services for the district in areas that Robert is not certified to do, because we have to have licenses, and if we don't have all the proper licenses, Robert doesn't have all of them, we use Pest Patrol to fill in. We're contracted with Pest Patrol. They do a monthly service on all the rodent stations. If you look all around our buildings, there's little bait stations, and those are baited to treat rats and mice. And Pest Patrol also services the cafeterias. They'll come in and spray for roaches and ants, professional services. In the report, you'll see that at the middle school, we've had some fluctuations in rodents. About two years ago, we had a really bad problem in the kitchen area, and we were able to attack it. It kind of went down for most of the period of about a year, year and a half, and in this August, it started rising again. We started seeing cases. We noticed that they moved from the cafeteria area. They started migrating towards the band hall area and the choir rooms is where we started trapping them. And then most recently, they've moved to this side of the building. There's the classrooms identified in the report, there's a quad of four classrooms, and they have a curtain partition across the four rooms. And what we're seeing is that the mice are able to move through the ceiling grid, and with that penetration for the curtain is their point where they come down. We've aggressively attacked them with the bait stations on the outside. For a while, there was quite a bit of consumption. Normally, you fill them once a month. There was a period here in October, we refilled them. We started filling them every week. The last two weeks, they just nibbled on it, so the pests are going down. We aggressively trapped them inside the building. Normally, we do it on the weekend, but if we had... We're having such a big issue, we would go in after classes let out, we would set the traps, and then in the mornings before the students came back from school, we would remove the traps. We're still... The numbers have dwindled quite a bit, but we're still going to do that Thanksgiving, Christmas. We're setting all sorts of traps. I've met with Pest Patrol, trying to get an explanation of why. If you look at the campus, for the most part, the teachers have done a really good job of removing food sources from the classroom areas. It's not completely eliminated, because we do do feeding in the class, but if you were to walk the halls, that primary and intermediate, there's much more food service, or food available for the rodents to eat. The only thing that Pest Patrol could come up with is an idea why we have more rodents is we're located next to West Guth Park, and all our storm sewer drain pipes in the parking lots and around the building tie into the park and drain in there, and they believe that that's a little highway for them to come closer to our buildings and penetrate it. Other than that, we're doing everything that we can legally to control the situation.
I haven't heard anything regarding this issue with our other campuses. Can you confirm that?
There are rodents at the other... We will trap one or two mice, but it's maybe like one or two a month, and they're much smaller. These were actually good-sized rats that we... These are rats that we were catching at middle school.
So our plan is to be more aggressive?
We're staying aggressive with the feeding on the outside. We want to stop them before they penetrate the building. Once they're in the buildings, then we're forced to go to trapping. We've done different baits. We've been using peanut butter for quite a bit at the recommendation. During Halloween, we switched over to it. Three Musketeers and Snickers bars, and those worked really well.
So, Patrick, what sort of oversight and protections to make sure that there's no student that set off a trap?
We remove the traps during the school day. The only traps that are left in the building during the school day were in the teacher's lounge, where students are not allowed to go into. We had them there, and then we occasionally will leave some in the ceiling grid, but we check those daily to make sure we don't have anything. So students shouldn't have any access. I mean, they have to bring an eight-foot ladder to get that, so we don't want any student to have access to a snap trap.
And then the education code prohibits us from being ultra-aggressive?
With poison, correct, inside the building. If we were industrial, we'd be able to apply poison inside the building, the premises, but in an educational setting, we cannot do that.
But you do it outside?
Outside, we can. And the bait stations are locked. You have to have a special key to get them. You have to be tamper-proof.
And we will continue aggressive treating it through the holidays when there's no students on campus.
Yes. I've... We're paying for Pest Patrol to come out every week and check those bait stations, and then either myself or Robert is walking with them and visually verifying the... I've walked the last two weeks with them just to visually verify what's going on.
Because I think we've gone past the point of... We're infested at the middle school from what I understand, and if you talk to kids, they'll tell you that. So, with as big as these animals are, we've got a major problem there that we've got to fix.
But the actual numbers, because it's coming down, and you're... We speculate that we're seeing the same rodent in the four classrooms. They're coming down. I can tell you, two years ago, when we were trapping, you know, close to thirty or forty, that was a serious infestation. This one, I think they're hungry, because the teachers have done a good job of looking of eliminating the food sources, and you go into these classrooms, and just little snacks. It's a cinnamon toast crunch was for breakfast one day, and they're so hungry, that they're coming down during the day, and when there's kids there to get to that food source.
It's not good. We've got to stop that.
The places that were damaged by the rodents, like in the choir from... And I'm going back to that Q and A thing that happened at the high school, where Ms. Adias and some of the kids said that certain areas were... The urine-infested carpets and stuff, has that been cleared up?
Yes, it's been cleaned. I can tell you, Ms. Elizonda walked the area with me. I took her to just kind of verify that we got everything cleaned up, so she was a witness that we were in the choir room. We agree... Anything that's like that, we aggressively clean up, and any droppings or smell or odor, we attack that.
Have we reached out to other districts to find out how they're handling it? Because I mean, you know, like the new Carroll district was built right in the middle of the field.
I haven't reached out to them. I reached out to Cal Island and Robstown, and they're experiencing... I spoke to them earlier this week, and they're experiencing similar...
Are they doing the same things we're doing? So I got a question on the poison. I know you said it's a no. Is it an absolute no? Is there a residence time? Like, you know, we have intercessions. Are there times where you can put it, and if you have a certain amount of residence time, it's okay? Have we checked that?
I believe... I'll double-check, but I believe the answer is no, and we don't want to put poison inside because I don't want them dying inside the building. We really want them outside. There's water sources in the restroom where they can get to that. So typically, we do our poisons outside to where they go look for a water source outside.
I'd rather them dead inside than alive inside coming down while they're eating.
The smells are bad, but if they die in the wall...
Yes, ma'am.
Can you talk more about the... I think I read about grates around the storm drains and...
Yes, so rats can get through really small areas, and Pest Patrol, one of their recommendations was that we put a tighter-fitting grate, smaller, you know, maybe a quarter-inch square over those covers to eliminate that highway, and that's something that we're looking to do.
And also, I think there's holes within the middle school. If you walk around, have all of those holes been fixed?
The holes as far as...
Like over by the small gym, and there's some rooms on the opposite side of the small gym? Not the big gym, but the small gym. There's an AC unit right there that sits along the wall. There's a hole underneath there.
Okay, I'll take a look at that, and we can address that.
Okay, because that would be an easy entrance. Okay.
I have a question. Patrick, this is not regarding this, but it was something that was brought to my attention that we have, and even in the neighborhoods around here, we've got four lady critters talking about foxes, foxes, that are roaming our, especially our high school. I was witness to that during the day once when I was up at the high school, and what it is, is kids are... There's stray cats that live at the high school. The kids are feeding the cats, but these little animals, they come... I saw them during the day in the park, in the staff parking lot, and I know that in the very early morning, when especially when the swimmers show up, they are on the premises.
They're running all over the place.
They are, yeah, they are. So, and it's not just... It's in the... It's in the community, but I'm concerned about those animals being out where our kids are, and even during the day. I saw one during the day. So, have you had any luck with trying to get animal control to see if they can help us either, you know...
I can ramp out the animal control. We've trapped them. We... I really haven't gone after the foxes so much because they are a predator to the mice, and in fact, one of the things that you can purchase to get rid of the mice is fox urine. So, at the high school, I attribute our... Because there's so many foxes out there. We used to have foxes here at the middle school, and they've gone. I haven't seen them in over a year.
You don't want to because there's coyotes here.
No.
At night, when I have an event and I open the back door, you see a pack of coyotes in the middle school area. So that's why the foxes are going.
So we haven't aggressed... We haven't gone after the foxes.
That's intentional.
That's intentional. Now, if there's skunks, we do trap those, we work with the city, we trap them and get them removed.
You know, Janie, the den is under the stairs. I don't know if you've... Under the stairs where you go for the swim, up to that area?
That's where they are.
That's where they are.
There's also a den by the flagpole up front.
So we're going to... Are we going to try to do something about that, or we're just going to just let them continue to attack our rat infestation?
Well, I...
I mean, is there... I don't know. Is there a threat to our kids with those animals being out?
As far as the foxes, they're pretty shy and skittish, and they pretty much run. They're not aggressive. Just like Mr. Benavides said, they're around the natorium. Now, if we ever saw that they were acting aggressive, we don't encourage anyone to feed one, because then they start to come to it. But with the feeding the cats at the high school, the middle school, that does draw them. By the chiller plant, there's quite a few of them out there in the evenings. They do go through the garbage sometimes, but if they become a problem, we can actively trap them.
And we are seeing, like Mr. Benavides said, an increase of sightings of the coyotes. That's...
Those we can reach out to the county. The coyotes, we would... If we see them on our campuses, we can reach out to the county, the Agriculture Extension Office, and they can do traps or baits for those also.
I think we probably... It would be a good idea to have the community or the schools, now that they see these animals, to report it, because otherwise, how are we going to know that they're actually other than, you know, yourself in the community, or somebody sees an animal on the premises of our schools, but it's not reported, because that is pretty dangerous. And I think that there's been an increase in coyote sightings everywhere, but these... All these new housing additions that have gone up have kind of run them off from their habitats. So, I don't know. I just... I'm concerned about the increase in sightings of coyotes as well.
And coyotes are a good carrier of rabies, and that's why we... The skunks and the coyotes, that's why we try and remove those immediately.
Anybody else have any more questions? Thank you so much, Patrick, for that update.
You're welcome.
Do you have any further business?
No, ma'am.
All right. Anybody like to adjourn the meeting? I have a motion to adjourn. We've got all seconds. That will be 55 on November 18th, 2022, and this meeting is adjourned.
Congratulations to the five.
Thank you.
Thank you.